Good evening, everyone. I am Teresa Smith and I call the June 4th, 2025 Parent and Community Advisory Council meeting to order. Ms. Wilson, can you please take the role?
Yes. Rebecca Brown. Sharice Holden. Reverend Dr. Evelyn Huggins. Carletta Lundey. Mashira Durden.
Present.
Latanza Wilson. Present. Kalen Lovell-Corias. Christopher Smith.
Present.
Akebra Lawrence.
Present.
Teresa Smith.
Present.
Dolores Milhouse.
Present.
Yosaida Hinton.
Present.
Sade Davis. Dr. Sheila Jackson. Robin Welsh.
Present.
Chairwoman Smith, we have enough for forum.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. So guys, it is graduation season and a transition to summertime. I hope that everyone is enjoying the nice weather, but even more so that our scholars are transitioning to their next phase, whether it be college, the workforce, high school, middle school, or perhaps first grade. This is a great time of the year to celebrate achievements and share successes with your loved ones and then creating that sense of community and pride. So I welcome everybody this evening to our meeting. Our first agenda item is adoption of the June 4th meeting agenda. I hope you all had an opportunity to review it. Are there any objections with adopting the June 4th, 2025 meeting agenda? Here are none. The June 4th, 2025 PCAC meeting agenda is adopted. Item 1.5, approval of the May 7th and April 2nd, 2025 meeting minutes. The May 7th and April 2nd, 2025 meeting minutes were posted to board docs. Are there any corrections to the minutes as posted? If there are no corrections, the minutes are approved. The next order of business is report of the chair. So there was a request for PCAC to attend the executive session with the Board of Education this month, but due to not being able to discuss this with PCAC, I informed the Board of Education of this as well as the expectation of item nine in Board Policy 1500. And I'd just like to take a moment to read it here. "The full Board and the superintendent will consult regularly, but not less than quarterly with the Parent Community Advisory Council and may meet more frequently by mutual agreement. Prior to the first board meeting of the school year, the Board and the superintendent will meet with PCAC to receive input regarding the development of the annual performance goals of the Board and PGCPS." With this said, I would like to ask PCAC if you are opposed to me proposing that we meet with the Board of Education starting next school year in October, February, April, and May? Are there any questions or concerns?
I have a question.
Sure.
That first date of October, is it possible to do that a little bit sooner, earlier? Or is there any reasoning why it needs to stay October?
So none of these months are etched in stone. These are just some that I thought about, so I welcome whatever you guys would like to move forward with. But we've been spinning our wheels. We're trying to get these meetings on the calendar. So at this point, I just want to be able to give them the months and then they can try to pencil in a date and, you know, we see if it all fits with everybody's schedule. So if October, if you think October is too late, you know, I welcome the input of everyone else. Ms. Milhouse?
Yes, I would just, our first meeting is not until September. So we don't meet again until September of the new school year. So that will, unless we're having a retreat, which will give us some time, you know, this summer to prepare some information. But I also want us to take into consideration that we do have, I want to say, four? Four new members coming on next school year? So we do want to have an opportunity to have their voices to be a part of the conversation. But I don't believe that that does not allow us to have an October meeting. We're just proposing it. It does say prior to the beginning of the school year? And so it would be welcoming to me, like if we could get in to a meeting with the Board during their summer retreat or something like that. But I just want us to make sure we take into consideration that the new members do not start until July 1. We can't meet without us having, under the Open Meeting Act. So we would have to kind of, you know, if we can't get a retreat approved, we would have to meet in small groups. But I just want to make sure that we are making sure that the voices that are here are being heard as well as the incoming members' voices are being a part of the conversation.
Fair enough. Any additional thoughts?
Ms. Wilson? I was going to say, I just wanted to echo the, and stress that if there is supposed to be a meeting prior to the beginning of the school year, I mean, the four meetings are good, but it sounds like there needs to be an additional meeting prior to the beginning of the school year.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Just adding one chair. So even if let's say the full body can be, maybe it's a good policy at least if you guys are the chairs, be able to meet to even prior to the school year, at least to begin the engagement of it. And I love your idea about preemptively getting on the schedule like early, like at least gives them something to react to. Right? So either those dates don't work or timeframe, it at least puts the ball in their court to respond to it.
Absolutely. Thank you. So Ms. Lawrence, in light of that discussion, would you be okay if we stick to October?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Appreciate the context.
Awesome. All right, great. Thank you for that. All right. So then the next agenda item that I have here, and Ms. Milhouse kind of segue us into this. I had mentioned, I think, a few meetings behind that some of our terms were ending. We were informed that more than 116 applications were received to backfill the positions unless somebody was selected to stay on. So I just want to alert you all who the selectees were. For District 1, Ms. Brianna Holmes. District 2, and I do apologize in advance if I mispronounce someone's names. Ms. Garcia Hurtah? Not that well with foreign language. District 3, Kamika Harris. District 6, myself Teresa Smith. District 9, Ms. Candace Perkins. Then the nonprofit representative is Mr. James Williams with the Kevin Durant Center. And then the business representative is Trayvon Sukie. He is a local entrepreneur and videographer. So I'm excited for the next set of people who would be part of PCAC. And eventually, we're going to have our heartfelt thanks to everybody who has served on PCAC thus far. All right. That concludes the report of the chair. Is there, are there any questions or any feedback for the items that I reported on? All right, here and now.
Vice Chair Smith, I just want to add, it has not been in the practice to have a lot of fanfare for our outgoing members. And so I am wanting to, hopefully that you can take some time doing your report to just give a few rah-rah words for the work that has been done tirelessly in the volunteer hours that have been put in for the members who have committed their time for the past two years. And especially, we missed the teacher appreciation for our Ms. Rebecca Brown last month and recognizing that. So if we can just take a moment and just say kudos and just, and I don't know if you had that on the agenda for later.
I actually did in the closing remarks section. Are you okay if we wait till later?
I am. I'm sorry, sorry.
So good. But I love the fact that you are making sure that we do recognize the folks who have definitely served. I mean, we don't want it to go unnoticed, so thank you. All right. So the report of the superintendees, I mean, the superintendees, good Lord, the report of the superintendent designees. The chair recognizes Ms. Welsh.
Good evening. So I just have some information about where we are with policies. I will say that the Board, I guess they met on May 8th or something, and they did not address any policies during that meeting except for the curriculum policy, which they did put out for public comment. But the other policies, they did provide an updated report of how many policies have been addressed for this school year. And currently, 13 have been enacted this year. This is as of April 24th. And then 15 were rescinded and 17 are currently under review and seven more are awaiting review. They also provided information in the number of bills that were reviewed this past year, of which 188 bills we were tracking and were reviewed. And we supported 28 of those bills. And we supported 8, 10 of them with amendments and then opposed 42 of the bills. And we did have the remaining ones. We did not have any position on. So as far as where we are with policies currently, the, right now, we, the committee, this upcoming meeting, which is June 17th, will be discussing student telehealth appointments and community schools, that both those policies for making a decision to send it out for public comment. So I do want to point out that back in the early part of the year, we did change the policy that had been originally 9340, which was about policy development and now has an 8,000 number. But instead of the committee voting to send it to the Board so that the Board can vote to send it out for public comment, the change in that policy now allows for the committee to vote on sending it out for public comment. And then it goes directly out to public comment at that point. And it sits out in public comment for two weeks and then it will come back to the committee. And then the committee will, you know, review all of the public comments and everything, make any decisions related to possible changes to the policy. And then they will move it, that's when they'll move it to the Board for the first reader and then second reader. So at this point in time, though, we have student telehealth appointments and community schools that the Board will, that the committee will vote on the 17th to make a determination to send it out for public comment. And then they are still in the discussion phase with a policy on business and also home and hospital teaching, as well as new policies that they haven't addressed previously this year that will be addressed at the 17th meeting will be employee use of social media and personal electronic devices. So we do not have a policy on that. We do have an administrative procedure, but we are going to be writing a policy on that. And then the other thing is the policy 0104 Title IX. That is actually being amended because of the fact that, so originally, it was going to be amended because the August 2024 regulations were coming out and we were going to have to amend it to reflect those regulations. However, there was a Supreme Court case, I'm not Supreme Court, federal court case back, I want to say in January, that basically ended up, the results of this ended up causing that the August 2024 regulations did not go into effect and it went back to the 2020 regulations. So our policy right now sort of reflects what Title IX had talked about and how the 2024 regulations were going to be looking. We were sort of proactive, but now we got to go back and make changes so that it actually is in line with the regulations that are in effect right now. So that will be the other thing that we will be looking at. The committee is also bringing back Board members' voucher reimbursement of expenses, which we had discussion on it, but then we had some specific questions about what expenses are allowable? And is it just reimbursable expenses that are allowed? Or can the school system set up a fund to, like, for example, there's a lot of requirements now in the law for Board members to be trained in a lot of different areas, which means they need to go to training sessions and conferences and stuff. And the allotment that they receive as a reimbursable doesn't always cover that expense. So there, so we did, it was sent to the Attorney General and we did get guidance on that, that they absolutely can have expenditures beyond the reimbursable amount, which is $7,000 per Board member so that they can take advantage of the opportunity to do trainings that they are actually required to do. So I think that that's where we are right now with the policies. I will say a policy that it looks awful benign, but when you really get down to the business of it, and it's coming back again for discussion at this meeting, because it was an old policy and I did a rewrite on it. It's policy 3000 Business. And it really is a foundational policy, which we're probably going to move over to the 0000 series, which has to do with commitments, because it's foundational in the sense that the business of the school system, whether it could be financial, operational, academic, whatever it might be, there should be strong foundation there in terms of really, everything should be in relation to what is best for kids and what is, you know, appropriate for kids. So I did take that policy and make some major changes to it. And there was some definite discussion and Board members are now giving some more feedback. And so that will be at the, will be coming back up for discussion on the June 17th meeting. So that's where we are right now with policies. And we did not get a couple of policies done this year, which we will move over to next year's, you know, list of policies. Because we just, we got so tied up also in the legislative stuff that we just didn't have time to get through every single thing. So anyway, any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Are there any questions? Ms. Wilson?
Yes, any of the policies that you say that will pretty much move over to next year, is there a way that that information would be able to be provided to PCAC so that they can start again preparing for next year to be able to, you know, advise things of that nature as it kind of comes along and they can kind of get ahead of it?
What we could do is, so on the June 17th meeting, their policy on policies says that the superintendent is responsible for providing a list of policies that he feels should be worked on during the upcoming school year. And then, and then on top of that, the Board members, and my understanding is, I want to say, the Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee was going to basically survey the Board members to see if there were any policies that they felt were important. And generally speaking, when they do decide they want to add a policy, it's based on their constituents coming to them saying they have concerns about a certain policy. So then all of that will be put together into a work plan. And the committee, I think, I want to say it would vote on it definitely either June or the first August meeting. But I could definitely, I'm pretty sure, be able to share with you at least the draft of what it might look like for the upcoming year, even if they don't vote on it right then and there. And then it would go, it then goes to the Board, I think, in the September meeting. But let me, let me see, because I wouldn't, you know, I don't have any problems with that. It could check, vary, but it might at least give you some sense of what is going to be addressed for the upcoming year. I will share with you that I do know one of the policies that will be coming back up will probably be the cell phone policy. Whether or not we will make that much change in that, I don't know. I know the superintendent has reached out to get information from a wide group of people. And there's been a group that has been working on putting the administrative procedure together for that and revising it. But Maryland State Department of Education just came out with guidelines on what they think should be in a cell phone policy. And so that one, I know we will at least go and review that policy to see if we should be making any changes. So that's one I know for a fact that will be coming back up. But I would be glad to share whatever, you know, once the committee makes the initial, if they vote on, especially if they vote on in June, at the June meeting, I can certainly share that with the PCAC. I could send it to Teresa, who could send it out, or to Mia, who could send it out to all the members.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, here and now, Ms. Welsh, thank you so much for your report this evening. Oh, not a problem. Thank you. All right, let me get back to the agenda. So our next item is related to the Bylaws Committee. Ms. Milhouse, can you provide us with an update or maybe the final outcome of the work that your subcommittee did for the bylaws?
So I did not see the report from last meeting on board docs that outline all the changes that were made in the bylaw, the revised bylaw, was that not?
Was the report in the last meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, it should have been there. Hold on one second.
Because it would be easy for me to share it, unless I can share the screen, if I can share my screen.
You should have, if you don't have the ability, I can. Do you see the buttons towards the bottom?
I have it.
Okay, great.
Can you see my, can you see it?
Yeah, yes, we can see.
Okay, what do you all see?
The PCAC Bylaws Committee Suggested Revisions, page 1.
Okay, that's because I have a new split screen, this new technology. Y'all just bear with me for a moment. I was looking for it. So I want to thank the committee for the work that we did, I would say, you know, in one or two sessions that we were able to get through everything, one in-person session and then a virtual session. So this was sent out, hoping to get feedback from everyone. And this right here lists the changes that we made to each article. So what I'm not going to do is I'm not going to read through each change. So I am really hoping that everyone did read through this. But I will talk to really more so some of the high level, like the Article 2 purpose. We really just wanted to make sure that it was clear on what we were here to do and not make it seem that we were just here to advise the Board. But, you know, as far as the superintendent as well, but so the language right here is standard advisory committee created to advise the Board of Education and facilitate its activities and programs in the public schools, right? So I'm hoping that whatever feedback you all have, because I didn't get any suggestions on the form. So I'm hoping that everyone was able to read it. Hearing no questions? Okay, I'm going to take that as, yes, you read it and you all thought we did a great job as well. Thank you very much. I do want to bring attention to a couple of things that were important to us, that we wanted to make sure that was a part of this. And before I do that, I do want to add, we would need to vote on this before we can move this forward to the Board for them to approve this. So we would accept the changes, move it forward before it can move forward to adoption, okay? And so one of the things that we wanted to talk about here, I'm going to say this is article, this is kind of out of order, because this says Article 4 here, Officers. But Article 9, where the PCAC members authorized for recommendations to the Board. One of the things that we talked about is when we are meeting with the various groups, that we are meeting in an advisory capacity and we are not in a position to afterwards go out and market or broadcast the information from that meeting. That is not for us to do as a role as the advisory committee. It is still up to PGCPS to communicate any final reports or any data that they may be presenting to us because they still have the opportunity that they may need to present to the Board. So this is just clear that we want to make sure that people understand that we are not to disclose, distribute, or discuss any confidential or sensitive information outside of advisory meetings without proper authorization. And that proper authorization would look like when we met and talked about the climate survey. Not until the climate survey was presented to the Board, then a copy of everything was sent to PCAC to say, hey, you know, would you mind sharing with your district? And so we want to be clear on making sure that people are not stepping in the role of communications, because PGCPS has an entirely very effective communication department. And we are not in any position trying to do anyone else's job or responsibility, just advise and make sure the community's voice and the parent voice is part of the conversation. I also want to bring attention to Article 7, where it states that all members shall remain on camera for the duration of the meetings. When a member needs to be off camera, he or she should alert the Chair or Vice Chair or whomever is presiding during the meeting. What we suggested as a revision, all members shall remain on camera for the duration of the meetings. When a member needs to be off camera, they should alert the Chair or Vice Chair. Whoever is presiding during the meeting, and we corrected the grammatical error in this. But I wanted to bring that to the attention because I know that this is something that we had not adhered to. And we had to bring it to a lot of people's attention when we're doing any voting. You have to be on camera with the voting. So we wanted to highlight that and then make sure that any grammatical errors were updated. So there weren't too many changes that we made to it, just some revisions. We talked about the Vice Chair, Article 6, about the election, because there was some discussion, should we, does the Vice Chair automatically move into the role of the Chair? And no, we still have an election. If the vacancy happens, then we would have an election, a special election at the next meeting. And so it's not too much more. I mean, I'm not going to read each change. But, and I mean, we can kind of vote on what do we want to move forward? Do people want more time? Do we wait until the new Board members, I mean, committee members come on? Because at this time, it's no rush. The school year is about to end and it probably won't make it to the agenda for the Board until next school year anyway.
Hey, Ms. Milhouse, it's Teresa. I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for you or if it's for Ms. Welsh. There tends to be inconsistency where we outline the terms for Vice Chair, Recording Secretary, and Chair. So my question is, is it appropriate for that information to be in a bylaw? So my question is, is it appropriate for that information to be in a bylaw or in a policy document?
Okay, so can you, can you share a little bit more, like what, where's the, is it, is it in the policy that you're seeing, the inconsistency?
Well, it's, it's not identified in the policy. We have it as, uh, we have it here in a bylaw, but in, I've seen it listed in other policies for the district. So I just don't know, when I say inconsistency, um, I'm not speaking specifically for P C A. So I'm just wondering from an operational standpoint, where does that information typically be placed? Is it a policy document or is it the bylaw that supports that particular, um, function? Ms. Welsh, you, you are on mute.
Are you talking about the terms of office?
Yes.
It's really, so if, if you read through our policies, some policies are more generic and don't have as much information in. And then they can, uh, now, uh, for many of them, there are administrative procedures, but it has somewhat of a similar effect as a bylaw. And so then the administrative procedure, it comes in and picks up and provides the detail of how it's gonna operate. And then some, some policies actually are a little bit more prescriptive. And so then it, it might lay it out very specifically and a part of, so ideally, policies are supposed to be pretty global. Um, and where the, the board is providing the big picture of what they want to see. And then the details would be worked out like in the bylaws or in the, um, administrative procedures. But it also is dependent on who is on your committee too, so you know, the board members change and so. And it is their policies and although I do remind them repeatedly that, you know, any. Like real details really need to be left for the administrative procedure. But depending on who is on the committee, that could happen, so. I don't, I'd have to go back and look at, um, the policy just to see if we even have language in there about that. But if it isn't in the policy, then of course the bylaws can absolutely pick that up.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns for the great work that Ms. Millhouse and her team has done?
And so the team would consist of, of Ms. Camber Lawrence and, um, Ms. Carlotta Lundie.
Thank you. All right, here and none, so what I'm hearing, Ms. Millhouse, is that we can decide to vote on these changes right now. Or we can choose to wait until the new, um. P C A. Group is on board and vote then. Because of the, my review of the information, I feel that we can, we could do this vote now. I don't think it's, it's not like a lot of substantial changes that would impact how we operate. And for that reason, I believe that the vote could be taken today, but I welcome how you all would like to, uh, move forward.
Yeah, I don't think it hurts to take the vote today. Um. And you know, and the new, the new folks, you know, will have the, the bylaws as they are with the work that was, you know, put into making sure they're updated. Um, I think, you know, it's, it's okay, my vote would be to go ahead and vote today.
Okay, I concur as well.
Okay. So in hearing that, would someone like to put a motion on the floor?
Uh, can I, can I just add one comment?
Sure.
What, what's missing was the frequency of the report. That was not in our update, we didn't have, um.
Let me, let me pull the policy up real quick, is it mentioned in the policy? Sometimes I see it there.
It's not.
Okay.
It, it's not, and so, um. I, I would like to just suggest adding it to something that it states that. It is at least at a minimum, an annual report. And, and I say that because if we say a monthly or quarterly report, um, you know, yeah. That, 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 that create.
I thought I was on mute, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I was a, your lips as well, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, but it, it just becomes a little overwhelming to try to present. Um, something on a quarterly basis. I mean, it was challenging enough to pull everything together just for the, um, it was a mid-year report. Um, and, and so. Because I do want to be mindful with our volunteer role, that we are parenting, we are working full-time jobs. We, we are doing a lot of different things. Um, and to bring together a report, um. You know. Monthly and quarterly, depending on what it, we wanted to look like, but, um, I think that we can do it. But I think it's best to give us the room to be able to add more. But not be responsible upfront for having to adhere to a guideline that we know, uh, we may not be able to adhere to. So my suggestion would be able to, um, just make a change where it talks about reporting. Um. To an annual report that we will submit an annual report.
Are there any objections with what Ms. Millhouse is recommending? That we will have an annual report. From P C A to the Board of Education and the Superintendent. All right, here and now, Ms. Millhouse, so would that change? Would someone would like, would someone like to put a motion on the floor?
So I would like, I will, um, move to, that we adopt the, um, draft bylaws. Um, based on, um, the recommendation presented by the bylaws committee. With adding the change to, um, what we will submit. Or be responsible for an annual report that will be submitted to the board annually.
I have a quick question, I'm so sorry. Um, if you are presenting.
Ms. Wilson, Ms. Wilson, I'm so, cause it's a motion on the floor, give me one, one second just to.
Well, point of clarification then.
Just one second. I need to know that we have a second and then if we need to adjust, we can.
Well, I have a point of clarification about the motion though.
But we got away.
I thought that supersedes the motion, because it's about the motion being made.
Ms. Wel, Ms. Welsh, can you, if, if I'm wrong, can you correct me? Do I need to get a second first and then we address any concerns about the motion?
Uh, generally speaking, they usually have the discussion after the sec, it's been seconded. But I, but in this instance, I don't know because of the fact that she's saying, uh, uh, ma, if she doesn't. Well, you know why, I, I think it should be in the discussion, cause then you can ask the question, what specifically do you mean? And then if we have to amend the motion, we can amend the motion before we're voted on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and properly seconded. That we adopt the draft bylaws with adding a change for submitting an annual report to the Board of Education. Are there any questions, Ms. Wilson?
Question, yes, can a member of the, uh, committee? That is presenting their proposal, are they able to put the motion on the floor? I just want to be clear.
Yes, anybody can make the motion, I think I could even make the motion, but it's not. Usually somebody other than the chair would make the motion, I guess I'll say it like that.
Okay, and that's, that was the reason why, cause if it can't, if it's not legal to do that, some organizations, that's not legal to be done, so I just wanted to clarify.
Ms. Welsh, is, am I correct that, um, Ms. Millhouse had an unofficial role by leading this, this, um, subcommittee? That she could make the motion?
She can make the motion.
Okay. All right, great.
On Robert Ruth.
Okay, thank you. Are there any objections with? The change and us adopting the bylaws that have been presented?
Not objection.
All right, hearing none. The adoption passes, the, the motion passes, I'm saying adoption, the motion passes, thank you. All right, Ms. Millhouse, do you have anything else related to the bylaws subcommittee update?
No, I don't, and I, I just want to, um, state that this, it, it is important that we do this. And it was, um, you know, it, it was a lot of conversation and consideration. And I would like to lend, you know, the floor to Ms. Lawrence to, for, you know, provide any feedback that she wants to add. In our robust discussions that we had.
Ms. Lawrence, if you have anything, I know you were new this year and you, you jumped right in. And that's the type of leader that we need.
I, I say to Ms. Millhouse all the time with her, um, her historical context is always helpful and her leadership in this. Um, I don't know that I would have been, felt comfortable jumping right in without, um, having that leadership. Um, I don't know that I have anything to add, it was, you know, it was a lot of robust discussion, um, with the committee. Um, I hope that we captured everything, um, and I hope that everyone did have a chance, like Ms. Millhouse said. To, to review it, um, and really like thoughtfully review it. I know we're all busy and we have a million, you know, I'm in here, uh, cooking and on the meeting and that type of thing, so we're all doing a million things. Um, but you know, I hope everyone did take, you know, really take a chance, the time out and pause to really look at it and offer, um, the feedback. Um, so that's all that I have.
Thank you, thank you.
And I, I just want to add to make sure everyone knows that Article Four, um, where it says officers. And the item number two, the chair will be responsible for submitting. And then I had in here to identify the timeframe, quarterly, annually written reports, so that's where I will make the update. So it will state, the chair shall be responsible for submitting, um, annual written reports to the board. And, um, do know that those reports have to be presented to the council. And upon approval, we submit those to the board. So I will make that update for Article Four, item number two.
Awesome, okay, great, thank you. All right, so the next. The next item on our agenda is the P C A retreat. So, let, before this school year, um, P C A had, had brought up the idea of having a retreat. Um, we had discussion with the superintendent, um, we also brought it up to our Board of Education. But we are now at the end of the school year and still no retreat. But I will say. I get the sense that everybody thinks it's a great idea. So, I believe that this will be a space for reflection, strategic planning and team building. Especially in light of our new members. So, I would like us to really intentionally move forward with this. Because we can't, we can't do those things in our regular sessions, so. I know we have elections on the, on the, um, agenda tonight, I don't know what my role would be come, come our next term. But just as a member of P C A, I would like to see that we set clear goals and priorities. I would like us to strengthen our relationships and ensure that there's a sense of unity among us. Um, and that there's a shared purpose between the parents and the community, cause that's who we are here to represent. Um, again, this will be an opportunity to review and reflect. We have some successes, but we definitely have some challenges too. So we need to just have that, that forum to be able to discuss things of the previous school year and what may be upcoming. Um, the other thing is reviewing data. I know that data has been presented to us, but we haven't really had an eye, uh, uh, opportunity. To dive into the data ourselves and try to make some influ, inf, um, inferences from the data. Um, and how that could also influence how we advise the superintendent and the Board of Education. So, I don't want a retreat to just be another meeting, again, I want us to be intentional. Let this be our launchpad for impactful parent and community, um, advocacy. So I'll open the floor for discussions, I would like to know what you all thoughts are and see how we can get this move forward. I pause. Any, any questions, concerns, Ms. Lawrence?
I know that, um, one of the things that would be helpful, huh, to have a retreat, you know, I understand, I learned. Um, you know, why we're not able to convene, but I think, um, like you said, it would build community, especially for new folks. Um, I just think of, you know, it would have been very helpful to, to have that connection and get to know, um, you know, everyone that's on P C A. Um, and just learn from everyone, so I definitely think it's important and I hope it is something that we can move forward. Um, so, you know, I would love to see it happen this summer.
Thank you. Others? Ms. Millhouse, I know you, you.
Okay, with your smiling on camera. I think everyone that's, uh, no, knows, you know, what I feel and over the past couple of years. It is, it has been something so important to me. Um, in order for you to effectively meet and collaborate and partner. That there has to be an opportunity for us to build community amongst each other. Um, and because we don't know each other, um, especially even when we come on, right? We just, we get a list of names, like, hey, and then we, we meet each other on camera. And so I don't think that most people understand that we, we don't know one another. And so we're building these relationships, you know, through these boxes. And when we're able to have a retreat to at least set the tone of, you know. What are we doing individually with our districts? But also, how do we make sure that we're folding in the work of the community partners that are on the council? Who sometimes I feel like they're just, they're just here and not really knowing, why am I here? What, what can I do to contribute? But to also understand that our, um, superintendent, you know, partners. Or members are not here also just to give us a bunch of reports, right? To read out everything, but, you know, they're out in-house resource and are, are able to really guide us. Um, as well as understanding what the board support does for us and what that looks like. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm all in, of course, right? Um, I've already pulled up the last proposal and like, hey, we already have a proposal. And, and I'm hoping that we can do it a little longer, the last time we did it from nine to twelve thirty. Um, and, you know, if we can just squeeze a couple more hours in there. Um, I, I think it would definitely be beneficial. Because it is a large school system to kind of figure out how to navigate. Some people are coming from the schoolhouse level of support. And then now moving up to what we are calling now the district level of support. And it is a, a very big transition from just engaging with the P T O, P T A level. Um, to what you do from an advisory standpoint, cause there is very, very different in our roles and what we do.
Absolutely, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Just, um, co-signing, uh, Mr. Kimber's point, and, um, just to state that I do think his new members extremely helpful, um, as they come on board. So I think the retreat's a great idea and, uh, like, just want to give kudos again to, uh, Lex Trumille House. I did not get settled into my role until she, she did a deep dive with me over several, uh, sessions, so, uh. I think, hope all new members get that same onboarding, so to speak. Uh, Lex Trumille House, I think you need like an onboarding class for everyone that comes on board and, and give them the, the introduction to it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thank you for saying that, Mr. Smith. Others? Ms. Walker, I hate to put you on the spot, but I would love to know what your. Thoughts are from a board member perspective. Ms. Walker, if you're there and you're speaking, you're on mute. So we'll, we'll circle back, um. Ms. Durdin, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, um, unfortunately, I have been voted out and someone new has been voted in. I, I've had a phenomenal time being on the board and getting to know all of the things that the. Um, the board member, not the woman, you know what I mean, the people who work for the, uh, for the district. The reports that they've put out and being able to communicate with everyone, I actually met you in person and that was awesome. That's when I really felt like, oh, we're really starting to form a bond. Um, so, I still plan to join the. Um, so, I still plan to join the meetings uh as a guest on the other side, but I think that the uh the retreat idea is phenomenal, that's like, I told my board member, there's so much work that I wanted to do with P CAC in in this role, I didn't do a tenth of the intention that I had coming on here and working with her and getting the district together and all the things, but um I've enjoyed my time here, I think that the retreat idea is phenomenal and I'm with um I really think that we all have to figure out how to work better together and, of course, knowing what other people are doing in their individual districts so that we can spread it and get, I I know that we do phenomenal work in Prince George County and there's phenomenal things that are happening and just being able to get that word out and uh, being able to affect change and s- speak more with the Board of Education. I I think that everything is very splintered. And the the very first thing that P CAC can do is just have that joint meeting in person. That's the very first thing that you can do, it's the the lowest hanging fruit. So, I think that that's a phenomenal idea that you guys um have in trying to get that together.
Awesome, thank you, thank you for that. Ms. Brown, any thoughts?
Sorry, I got caught up in another meeting, so I'm actually driving home. I think it would be absolutely wonderful, I see you guys every month on a line in your boxes. Uh, so I think it's a phenomenal idea to get together and actually do some face-to-face bonding uh and share experiences. Um, I know we we do a lot on camera, but, or off camera for me, uh, but you know, being able to actually put, you know, really what we're trying to do here and make that actual commitment in person, it would be huge.
Awesome to hear, Ms. Welsh?
I think, I think it'd be a great idea to, when we had the one retreat, I thought it was very helpful, it helped Joy get to know all the different uh committee members, which I thought was, and and even like the strengths that each committee member brought, because each of all the members on this committee have their own areas of expertise and stuff which can really be helpful. And also, as we, I can remember at the last um retreat, we got talking about different things and there were definitely some areas that that the committee members felt were really things that down the road should be addressed and you know, looking at data, you know, and the research and providing guidance to the board and to the um superintendent, and so I think, I think it would be a great idea.
Awesome. And then Ms. Hinton, I am go- oh, Ms. Hinton and Ms. Wilson, I would like to hear from the two of you and then Ms. Walker, I knew she'll come back.
And then Ms. Barton.
Oh, Ms. Barton, yes, so Ms. Hinton, you have any thoughts? This is your first year too, so, I know you and I have been able to to build a relationship, but yes, share your thoughts.
So, I've been grateful to be here with you guys and see that um we're trying to work together. I would like to see more improvement and I would like us to get together and see us, I think when we, you guys got together, I was not part of the members, I I don't think I was here and I don't think I I have seen some of you out there and I have talked to some of you here, that being great, but I think like we should meet one day and hopefully we can like connect in different way, not just here and being an honor to be part of this group and I hope that we can do more together.
Yes, 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 thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, first, uh, my apologies, I needed to be three places at one time tonight, um, parents, all all of the hats. Um, but no, um, I am one that will not be uh returning, I was able to do a first term. Um, my son's school, we have some weird stuff going on with the school as well, and so I wouldn't even be back in District Two for the full term. Um, but I do think that having a retreat would be absolutely fantastic because sometimes, you know, I would uh personally struggle with trying to fully wrap my head around how are we supposed to be able to advise when we don't necessarily have all the means to be able to advise at all times, and I think getting clear, getting a clear understanding when you're coming into the board of, you know, the expectations of how to be able to put that advisement together as a group and have that advisement go to the board and also have, um, you know, I I've had the chance to attend a uh a meeting that, you know, in the past, we've had a board member on and it was a bit jarring, um. And so, I I am glad that um uh, board member uh uh Walker, I am glad to see when you have come, it has been an absolute breath of fresh air, it's always positivity and how we can work together and things of that nature, so I personally appreciate that. Um, and I think that essentially uh with Chairwoman uh Smith getting ahead of things, I love that, and so I definitely say, go ahead, try to get this um uh, retreat together as best as possible, I don't know if you all kind of a- a- as a P CAC, once, you know, we're we're gone, if you all should have like committees in and of yourself or whatnot, but I do think that that would be helpful so that you're able to, if something does come up last minute, you'll have different groups already in place to be able to jump on it and address it sooner rather than kind of being proactive or flat-footed because we received something kind of late, but I thank you all, you all have absolutely positively been wonderful and thank you all so much for coming together to try to assist with the advisement for all of our students, our community, at the end of the day, for Prince George County Public School.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Ms. Barton, I know you you play a background role, but you are, you are essential to this group. And then you would be essential to the retreat as well, so do you have any thoughts?
Uh, absolutely, I always think uh, a retreat is always something good to have, you know, you pull it back, pull back from the regular routine of, you know, we do this all day, every day and everything, and you can come together and to be face-to-face to greet each other, learn a little more about each other, I I think it's an excellent idea, you should definitely move forward with it.
Awesome, thank you, so Ms. Walker, wrap it on up, I know that
Thank you, I'm so sorry, I didn't hear you earlier, but listen ladies and gents, I want to say thank you so much for the work that you've done, for those of you who are transitioning, I don't take it for granted that you are volunteers and you're you apply and you're doing the work, so thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Wilson, thank you for the kind words. I will echo everybody's sentiments that a retreat is so foundational. It's something that you need for all of y'all to be in a room to be able to discuss, sometimes board meetings just simply don't do it. It doesn't give you the ability to discuss what you need outside of an agenda, and this allows you to go deeper, so I am a fan the, your 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 chair and your vice chair know that I am a fan of retreats and I will do everything I can in order to support you in that endeavor. I think that when you all get together, that you can brainstorm and you can pull together a really cohesive plan and recommendations to come back to the board and the superintendent, so I'm happy for you all to do that. I did hear Ms. Hinton uh say District Eight, so you know I'm gonna ride for District Nine and make sure I put that shout out right there, but I want you all to know that I appreciate you all and I want to thank you for your service, for those of you all continuing forward. Um, I do have a District Nine new representative and we have a number of representatives, I feel like there's like five or six that's coming on board, and listen, we get better every year, I know there's hiccups, you guys, and there's jumps and there's frustrations, but I want you to know that every year we make something better, and then you know what happens when you make something better? Then it bubbles up the other issues, and so we're gonna tackle that and it's gonna bubble up other ones, and we might not be here at the at the pinnacle, but we're gonna know that we were at the foundation to make this work, so I just want to say thank you so much. And um, if you let me talk, I'll be talking forever, so I'll just stop right there. And um, again, as you all talk at the retreat, you can also talk about what support looks like from the board liaison, because I'm happy to make sure that um I I pull that together, all right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Walker, before you leave, I do have a question for you. Um, because there may be a cost associated with this, can you just educate me on how that process looks?
Yep, send it to Mia.
Oh, send it to Mia.
Is outline what you need.
Yes.
And then go ahead and send that to Mia and we'll figure it out, okay? We know that we want to support this retreat, and so we'll figure out what the right next steps are and how I can be an advocate of that. But what will look like help is if you have kind of like a budget of what that'll look like, um, and we'll see what really needs to be, not what really, when I say that, I mean, what can be done in-house, for instance, we have printing, for instance, and let's see what you have budgeted, let's look at the total price and then see where we can still give you what you need, et cetera. So send it to Mia, and Mia, Mia and Mia gonna work it together and make sure you have what you need, okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
Can I just share, um, you know, the proposal that we used the last time, it was a it was a very clear um ask, you know, Dr. Jackson and her team came and helped kind of do some team building activities not to um you know, increase any costs, we did the retreat actually at the board office in the back um as well. And um, the board office did support and Dr. Jackson's team did support with some printing, um, but what had to happen is we have to vote on the request for the retreat first um, and, you know, come up with a date and time, a proposed date and time, and then we submit that um to the board office. Um, well, actually to the liaison, the board office, who will present it to the board, who has to vote on it. Because there will be a cost to, um, what we asked for was um continental breakfast and lunch.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that I I need a motion from the floor to proceed with um, creating a proposal for the retreat.
Yes, and I already, the proposal, we already have a proposal, so so we're not, we're not voting to create a proposal.
So, just to move forward with doing a retreat?
Yes, move forward with presenting a a proposal for the retreat. And so the proposal, we already have one, you know, the template that was approved and the format that they told us to put it in um, uh, the last time, and then we just need to decide on um a date to present to the board when we would like to do it.
Okay, gotcha, so, we may need two motions, so so would someone like to put a motion on the floor related to moving forward with presenting the proposal for a retreat?
I move that we, Akeembra, I move that we um present the proposal for the retreat to the board.
With Thompson, I second.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded that we present a retreat repo- retreat proposal to our Board of Education. Are there any objections? Hearing none, we will move forward with that. Um, now the next thing we need to determine, should we have this retreat before the school year? Starts? How did you guys do it last time, Ms. Mailhouse?
So, we did it during the school ye- so, so we don't want to talk about how we did it last time, like when?
I was just trying to get a a roundabout idea, but of course, we can do
We didn't, you know, because the timing of it, we ended up doing it like at the end of the school year. Um, and so, this would probably have to be open dates because we don't have the new members on board. To see if, um, and I don't know if the board office is open in the summertime, I don't know, you know, um. You say yes?
Yes, yes, we are.
The board is on break, but I'm here for you guys, I'll I'll help.
The board members have a six-week break starting July first, but the board office staff, we work twelve months a year.
Mm-hmm, and and we'll say this, Board Member Walker, the um, well, I don't even know, we, did we have a liaison before? Uh, yeah, we did have a liaison, we did, and the liaison did drop by. Um, but um, it wasn't like a requirement for the board liaison to be present at the meeting. Um, but we definitely would love and welcome the president.
My goal will be to be there.
Absolutely, um, and so my suggestion would be to um submit the proposal with um, an an open date for the summer, right, like, we're not gonna stick to a date because we now need to reach out to the other, the incoming council members. Um, and if I could make this suggestion, if it's okay, um, based on, because the board will have to approve the budget, because we don't have a budget, but I think it would be very beneficial for um us to also maybe have some of the um current members who are transitioning out. If they would like to be in attendance to kind of help with some information sharing and transferring of knowledge. Um, and and just really be a part of sharing what, you know, what they experience, but also helping us build for the future.
I think that's a good idea, so I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. In lieu of getting a uh, a date tonight, we would submit the proposal with an open date. And then we can have further discussion about a concrete date.
Right, once if, once they approve the 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 proposal, then we just choose a date. So that, you know, we don't have to have the proposal, um, we just know we're asking for a summer date. We're asking for a date prior to the beginning of the school year, and then after this meeting, then, you know, we need to discuss how we will then reach out to the um incoming um council members to get their input about their time. But we did have it on a Saturday, um, and it started at nine thirty, we had continental breakfast, we um, had lunch and some very good robust discussions and some pretty good activities that were led by Dr. Jackson and her team.
Okay, okay, so based on the discussion, guys, you could, are there any concerns with us moving forward in that regard? Hearing none, great, thank you all for the feedback for this agenda item. All right, so, our last agenda item is elections. There are three positions, Chair, Vice Chair, and Recording Secretary. I would like to know, are there any nominations for any of these roles? Y'all know we gotta operate, so we gotta get some people to step up. How about we start off with Recording Secretary? Nobody never wants to do that role. I I would like to nominate Ms. Lawrence for this position. I think it would be great.
I'm sorry, I'm sighing, um. Um, I, I, can I not, um, I just, I sometimes lose my I can record, I can be Recording Secretary, I need to brush up on my Roberts rules, um, which I can do. Um, and also, I know that there's a good template that I can use for um, for movement for it. I just sometimes lose myself and forget that I'm recording when I'm recording. So, if you, if I, you know, if if that's the case that you see me not recording, I I might need just a little reminder. Exactly, excuse, excuse my dog, but yes, I'm happy to um, accept that role.
Excellent, and and look, we we are team players here, until you, you know, get up to speed, we will make sure that, you know, we're helping you out.
Great, great.
Absolutely.
I'll just add this two cent to this, Ms. Lawrence, you 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 don't have to notate everything that's said. You really just have to notate when we're voting on something, who made the motion, right, who first seconded, you know. And then, you just can say that there was discussion.
And any actions.
Right, exactly, exactly, okay, all right.
Very high level, and you can use A I to help you.
Amen.
But but thank you for accepting the charge there. All right, um, Vice Chair. Any nominations or self-nominations?
We need to vote on
Oh, we sure do. I guess I felt like it's such a hard position to 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 get somebody to do, let's move it forward. Let me stay in order, go ahead, Ms. Ms. Mailhouse, what did you say?
I was like, that's why we gotta have him vote her in.
All right, so Ms. Akeembra Lawrence has accepted um the nomination for Recording Secretary. Are there any objections? Hearing none. Ms. Akeembra Lawrence is now our Recording Secretary for next if, so for next school year, most definitely, but if our bylaws pass, you might be in that role for two years.
Okay.
Right, Ms. Ms. Mailhouse?
No, it's still one year.
Oh, it's still one year? Okay, all right, I've been correct.
We didn't change that.
That's right, we didn't change that, we did have discussion about it, but we did not.
But we did not change that.
Okay, all right. So the next position is Vice Chair. Are there any nominations?
Can I ask for a point of clarification? So Chair Smith and Chair Millhouse, y'all are still serving next year, correct?
As as far as district members, representatives, yes.
Yes, right?
Why'd you ask that?
Because do we, do we need to?
Do we need to change anything around?
Right, exactly.
Understood. So that said. I think I would like to step down from Chair and be Vice Chair. I have enjoyed my role as Chair. But what happened to me through advocacy. Another group got stood up, and if, for most people who who know my involvement with special education, that's the Disability Issues Advisory Board. And I am Vice Chair over there, and I enjoy the work of both groups. So I would like to step down as Chair here and be Vice Chair to still support the work that's being done. Continue some of the ideas that came from my term here. Yeah, so I'll I'll stop there unless y'all need a a a speech. So is there anybody else who would like to nominate themselves as Vice Chair?
Well, can I, can I nominate Ms. Millhouse?
I nominate her as Chair and then Ms. Smith as Vice Chair.
Well, well, wait a minute, we gotta focus.
I think we, let's vote and move forward.
Let's, let's focus on the Chair, Vice Chair role. And and I will say this, I I I am open, I do want to be, full transparency, I do have one year. Left. I still have a lot of ideas and a lot of energy and, but I do want to support. Vice Chair Smith and the work that she's doing, and I know she mentioned DIAD, but she also. Maybe not on the board with CCAT, but her support and work with CCAT. Which is really the voice for special education, for the parents in our school district. Is is really creating a lot of movement because of her recent advocacy work as well. So I do support your transition, so you can also. Have the time and attention to what your passion truly is, but your voice is still going to be with us because you have two years left. And I want to make sure that we move forward in recognizing the work that you've done, and you're not saying you're going anywhere. You just.
Just shifting roles.
Just shifting a little bit. For a second or two. I guess you can't motion because you.
Yeah, I think somebody else may have to.
So I would like to place a motion, move forward a motion that we accept. Chair Smith's. Decision to self nominate and move into the role of Vice Chair for the Parent Community Advisory Council. All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Mailhouse.
Congratulations, July first, you become. Ask one question, so do, since you didn't do a report this year, and I'm just joking.
Look at you, look at you. All right, so the next position is Chair. Which is a very essential role. And I would say it's not light work, but that's not to discourage anyone. You are the voice of everybody. PCCAC and then the people that's behind us. So are there any nominations for the position of Chair?
I'm not made, Ms. Millhouse.
Laton to Wilson, I second.
I third.
Ms. Millhouse, it sounds like you are not getting out of this.
Open up discussion, I'm just joking. So I do, I I want to be very transparent and and state that I accept the nomination, one. This is my last year because I've already served, this is my second term, the last year of my second term. But my work will entail next year is developing the next PCCAC leadership. And so I will be looking to you all, as well as the new council members that will be coming in. To, and you know, as we said with the retreat and throughout the year, gleaning from me, but you don't even have to glean from me because I am going to pour it out. And I want to make sure that the voices that we have around the table. Nobody really knows who's the Chair or the Vice Chair or the Recording Secretary, because we are, we are working effectively as a group. And so I accept the nomination, but I accept the nomination with everyone knowing. That I will be working to make sure that I develop the next. Parent leader voices to carry the work that has to move forward.
So you only doing work for what, one month? Just joking.
I mean, I will serve my entire term out, but I will, you know. My my focus is to make sure that everybody, we're rotating throughout the executive leader meetings, right? That people also get an opportunity to sit in the role to maybe lead the the meeting. But I I do want. Everyone to know that their voice, the the titles that we have to carry to to do the administrative work, that that's how I see myself, right? Anybody in the executive role, we we're doing the administrative work, right? But it's our voices that we are carrying forward on on those documents to say, hey, as a collective, this is what we're doing. So no, it won't be for one month. It will be for the year. Be for the year, and then I will transition out, but I will not be going anywhere until my children graduate.
So your voice will always be here. I got you. All right, does anyone oppose Ms. Mailhouse being the next Chair for PCCAC? Hearing none. This will be my last meeting because Ms. Mailhouse will be the next Chair for us. Congratulations, everyone.
Amazing, congratulations, everybody. This is awesome. The continuity is great. The switch of roles because how powerful of a duo it's been. I'm really excited to see the leadership continue in each of you all. At supporting roles within your district, so great job.
Thank you. All right, guys, so moving this right along, do we have any follow ups? Any next steps? Hearing none.
Actually, I'm sorry, I just had a quick question from Ms. Barton. I know that at our last meeting. We had composed questions from Mr. Baldwin at Transportation Office. Just wondering if you know if he ever received those, and if so, if he had any. If he had a response.
I did send them over to him. I have, I haven't received anything. I will check on it first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Lawrence, I'm glad you actually brought that up, and just so that other families, if they have not already seen. The notification, there is a survey that's out there. I think it went to the entire school body. But it impacts. Families who are at specialty schools. It's four schools. I know Maya, I know Maya because one of my children go to Maya. The Spanish immersion school, and it was two others, if anyone knows.
I think one of them was Door Kennedy.
Door Kennedy, okay, so the other French immersion.
Overlook and Philistine Williams.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So just a reminder, if you haven't completed the survey, please go out because what they are doing is launching a pilot. For next school year for those four schools, and there will be hubs where the students will be picked up from. So share your thoughts on that survey so that the Department of Transportation can know how the the parent body feels. You have the floor. Oh, I thought there was a question.
That the question was for me, is the Mandarin immersion school, is that still?
It wasn't listed as part of the pilot, so I, we could get clarity, but I would assume they're just gonna proceed with their normal. Planning for bus stops for those students.
Thank you.
All right, no problem.
I have a quick question. We were at my school told that transportation is normally opt out, but that this year it would be opt in. And my parent community was asking, when are they gonna have the opportunity to opt in? Or did we just mishear that everybody's gonna automatically be assigned the bus route?
So I don't think I can answer that question tonight, but I'll jot it down, and then we'll, we'll have, we'll do some follow up with the Department of Transportation.
Thank you.
One of the things I was gonna say is, I think Ms. Barton can take that off and help to. Get an answer for that on behalf of PCCAC as well. Ms. Barton, what do you think? Can you, would you be able to? Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, guys, so the moment of the hour, if there are no other questions. Yes, Ms. Walker?
Thank you so much. You know, I try not to add into these calls, but thank you. One of the things I was wondering from your vantage point is. You all represent a district, and I'm just wondering how you all interact to help to get the word out. And maybe Ms. Barton can help on that, since I don't know if you all have your own distribution list. Maybe I can talk to Ms. Barton afterwards, just to see like how you all send out communication, but I was just wondering. How you all get out important information to say, hey, we'd love for you all to fill this out in case you haven't seen it. If not, then one of the things that I think I can do is. For we, our work, let me talk to Ms. Barton offline to see how board members can assist with that.
That's, I think that that's a great, great idea, and I appreciate you taking the lead on that, but. I just wanted to also mention that I think it's a challenge. I think every district. Is probably unique in how they receive information. Sometimes social media is like the the one stop shop for a lot of folks, but I won't say that that is the actual solution. And I think we probably should, that may be an item at the the retreat, a a discussion item on. How things, how information is filtered to make sure that we're reaching our families. So I do appreciate, I just wanted to say that because I appreciate. You bringing it up, but on a broad.
Well, I think it's an and versus a but, because the good news is for information like this that's district wide. Is that PGCPS does send it out. So as you said before, it's gone out already. This is just like the additive to it. So we each have, when I say we, the board members each have newsletters or some way we communicate on top of the communication. So that might be something that doesn't look like extra work, but that's why I said. In addition to the amazing things that happen and what you guys are gonna talk about at the retreat, I do think that. I can play a role as a liaison to board members, and I'll work with Ms. Barton to figure out how can we engage board members. And the important stuff that you all are looking at, like transportation specifically, not everything, but the things that's really important to you all. And let me, and I'll take that to work with Ms. Barton, then I'll bring it back. And if you all say no to it, I'm good, but I just want to make sure that I'm doing. I feel good about doing a little bit of something, you know.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Ms. Barton?
Yeah, my question was the previous question that Ms. Walker had asked me to look into. Who was the person who asked that question? Because I was.
It was Ms. Durden. About the opt in and opt out.
Ms. Barton, we've worked together on this question before. We've contacted transportation, it just haven't gotten back to us, so it won't be the first time that they're hearing from us. On this topic.
Okay, okay, great.
All right, thank you. Any other items? All right, so before we adjourn the meeting, I do, I do have a little message for our people here. So I would like to honor not just the time that you all have served. But the heart behind the volunteer hours that you guys have put in. Some of us are department's executive board members, Ms. Wilson. I know you and I joined PCCAC together. We've, now we have served on the board together, so I really thank you for all of the work that you have done. Thank you for serving, thank you for the questions that you have asked. It goes without being noticed. I mean, yeah. So everybody has been dedicated, dedicated. It shows that you guys are rooted in the love for the children as well as the community. And that cannot be measured by just clocking in the hours. So again, know that I'm saying thank you to you all. You sat here, and it was not just to be heard, but to also listen to others, to get into this fight. And you asked the hard questions, you offered bold ideas, and you reminded us. That progress does not happen in silence. I know sometimes people don't like our delivery. We all have different personalities, but look, we are here for the same mission, and it's for our school system. There may have been late night emails, you may have attended your own district meetings. There may have been planning sessions that you were a part of, but you showed up, so thank you. And you did it with grace, you did it with grit, you did it with generosity. So for those who are not continuing on, I want you to know that you're not really stepping back from your role. Your impact is still here. We want to hear your echo. We want you to still empower families. We want you to challenge the policies that's there. We want everybody's voice to be lifted, so please continue to stay engaged. Please continue to stay connected to PCCAC. Then, Ms. Mailhouse, I have to personally thank you for your mentorship. Your counsel for helping me be a good leader and continue the mission of PCCAC. I think our partnership has been remarkable, so I deeply, I deeply appreciate your willingness to share information. And your desire to strengthen parents and family. Thank you so much. So I thank you all again for your service, and then if you all have anything to share with one another, I give you all the floor. So I'll start with Ms. Mailhouse.
I'm not leaving.
I know, but but some other people are leaving in case you want to share.
No, I'm just joking. You know, for those who, you know, Ms. Brown, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Durden, you know. You you all may be transitioning off of the council. I am hoping that you all are not transitioning out of our lives. I do hope that we will still be able to call on you for insight, guidance, counsel, advice. That you all are a part of. The the strength that helped carry us forward this school year and the previous school year and and the work that you all have done. It's not unnoticed. And Ms. Brown, I want to say to you, I heard you very loud and clear when you mentioned. That the way we are engaging with our children around math, we're making them hate it. So I walked away from that conversation and and did some self reflection and made sure that when I spoke about math in my house. Because I love math, that I spoke about it with more more excitement and curiosity. Than my own frustration because of this new math. And Ms. Wilson, thank you for jumping in. And taking over the meeting minutes, because I thought, I was like, Lord, I can't do it again. I can't, I can't write another note. I can't do it. I just can't do it, I can't. And so I I thank you for the various conversations that we've had and. Just the insight that you've given me about what it's like to navigate. Right, from a parent perspective and the work that we do when we're working and where we're managing households. And caring for people, but what we need to do to make sure that we are vibrant and very present for ourselves. Because our children see us. And Ms. Durden, I, your your passion and commitment. You're not going anywhere. Like you say, you had a lot of insight and guidance and information to share. So just because you're not sitting on camera with us, right, you're going to still be on camera with us. Just know that, right? And I'm hoping that we will all be able to see each other. Face to face to glean from what you all have said to us month to month, have shared, you know. Voicemails, emails. But your voices are very powerful, and so don't go away, don't be quiet. Continue to elevate the concerns, but what Ms. Durden, what you stated was, we also want to. But what Ms. Durden, what you stated was, we also want to highlight and elevate the great things that are happening in PGCPS. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milhouse. Are there others that would like to share anything?
Hi, Mommy.
Hi.
Hey, Mama, I.
Ms. Wilson, you have the floor.
Times again.
Uh, first, let me say that hearing that child, that, that child's voice was so beautiful. Oh, my God, it was so adorable. Oh, sorry, I have one. I'm only gonna have one. But, um, but, um, I would also like to say that, you know, I think that, uh, some of us, that we were able to complete a, uh, a term. Um, you know, from my understanding, there's still eligibility for a second term if in the future your children are still within the system or you're still in some type of eligible place. So, you know, if your drive is still there, if that fire is still burning, you know, you may have to wait two years, whatever the case may be, but still jump back in there. Um, put your application in and, you know, you can, you can probably also get with some of these members that are here, whoever your particular PCCAC rep is, um, and just, you know, stay on it. So again, uh, I think as, uh, Ms. Milhouse said, you don't necessarily need to be on camera to be on camera. So, um, that's what, you know, I'm taking from this. Um, my child will probably be in high school by the time I look to try to come back since our, I think, uh, uh, Vice Chair Milhouse, we're, you guys will be leaving out of the school that we will be going into. Um, and so it's gonna be very weird the next two years, and then my son will be off to high school. And obviously, we don't know where that'll be or what that's gonna look like at this time. Um, but it's been an absolute pleasure working with you all.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I really appreciate that. My kids just walked in the house from a baseball game, and they don't see that I'm trying to run a meeting. Um, are there others that would like to share this evening? Well, I'm hearing none. So again, thank you all for your service. Um, we moved this retreat forward. I hope to see everyone there. You are more than welcome. It's, it will also be an open meeting, so the general public is, um, can, can be present as well, but especially our PCCAC members. I would love to see you all there. So can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
A motion that we adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-seven PM.
Do I have a second?
I second Akeembra.
Thank you. So it has been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-seven PM this evening. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Bye.
Thank y'all. Bye.